Thanks for sharing that. This is money, that's what it is.
We're on air.
Right. Oops. We are on air and I'm not paying attention, sorry folks, but...
It's a little early.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, could we do a roll call? And we have Coburn and Bessie Johnson, they are excused.
Thank you. Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Yep.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Conope.
Here.
Okay. And it looks like we have a lot of our wonderful City of Albany Police Department here attending this evening, and welcome, everyone, and I think we're going to be having some awards coming from, from the chief, so...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I have the privilege to award the sworn employee of the year and the civilian employee of the year. I would like to ask Officer Blake Miller to come up here. Officer Miller has been employed with the City of Albany as a police officer since June of 2016. Before being hired with the city, Officer Miller played college baseball for Western Oregon State College before being drafted to the Giants organization in 2013. He was with this organization until 2015. Since Officer Miller's hire date, he has progressed as a police officer in many ways. Officer Miller treats citizens with respect and acts in a professional manner when conducting police work throughout the city. He is a hard charger against crime and takes pride in serving the people as a police officer. When he's not responding to calls for service, he's actively conducting self-initiated activity. Officer Blake Miller makes good quality arrests and is productive with his downtime. Officer Miller is a leader in the department in the area of police activity. He is a great resource for other officers that might need assistance in solving cases. He also does not hesitate to help others with day-to-day tasks and assignments. Officer Blake Miller works well with his teammates and other department members. He has volunteered for overtime shifts, stayed to cover staffing, and has done shift trades so other officers have time off. He is a team player and demonstrates unity and dedication to our department family. For the year of 2018, Officer Miller was selected twice for employee of the quarter. For these reasons, Officer Miller was selected for sworn employee of the year, congratulations. Next, I would like to ask co-compliance Officer Chris Shindel to come up here. Co-compliance Officer Shindel has been employed for the city for five years. He has worked as a co-compliance officer with the department since July of 2016. Since taking this position, he has active, he has attacked livability issues in our city with tenacity and passion. During the year of 2018, he was instrumental in implementation and adoption of Albany municipal codes that address community issues and help the police department keep citizens safe. His supervisors voiced that. Chris is committed to his position and does an excellent job. He continues to make a positive difference in the City of Albany quality of life. He treats people and situations with compassion and respect while enforcing the city codes. For these reasons, co-compliance Officer Chris Shindel was selected for civilian employee of the year, congratulations.
Is it? Okay, was that his little girl in the back? That was...
Yes.
Yes, well, congratulations, and I think there's a new little baby too in your family, so... But congratulations, Chris, and also Blake, thank you so much, congratulations, and for everyone's service, for our protection in Albany, we greatly appreciate your service, and thank you so much. Okay, um, let's see, I'm going to move up the code enforcement reports, so then that way Chris can be able to not have to stay till the end of the meeting, and so he can be able to get his little ones home.
This is one occasion when probably Chris is even less prepared than I am, since he's been off for a while. But you have before you the semi-annual report for our 20th year of service for the code enforcement team. We have the list of addresses that have taken up most of our time.
Mary, can you move that mic? I think somebody pushed it back, so...
How dare they?
I know.
Supposed to touch.
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Anyway, the list of the cases that have taken up most of our time for the year of those cases. Six are in the urban renewal district where Chris is assigned to spend half of his time. So I thought, I'm not sure if we're eliminating cases in that area more quickly than in other parts of town, but we just, we have them all over the city at the moment. I have nothing specifically to mention, but I'm, we're willing to answer questions about any specific cases that you want to know, or any trends, or whatever.
Looks like you've been busy.
We have been busy. Some things take forever, and we have a number of those cases on here that either have been there for, for a year or longer, or have popped up after time away.
Uh-huh. I think the one that, Dick, didn't you have a question on the one on Fourth Avenue, that foreclosure one, or...
Yeah, 732.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, uh, no, it says the new owner is Federal National Mortgage Association. Are we out of the frying pan into the fire? Are we associated with another bank? That's kind of...
So Fannie Mae actually bought that at auction just before I went on leave, and currently...
So are they going to let it sit there like most banks do?
I think Sean's been in talks with them more recently than I have, so I'm not really sure.
So actually, we, I received a call from someone, a representative from them out of Denver, a couple of weeks ago, left a message about the liens, wanted to talk about those on a Friday, and I was in Hood River, called them back on Monday, got their voicemail, left a message, called them again Tuesday, got a message, left another voicemail, and then sent them an email on Wednesday, and that was last week, and I haven't heard anything, so that's where we're at.
They've been in touch with our finance department, asking about fines and fees that are associated with work we've done there, and with the house being a chronic, it was a chronic news, or derelict structure for a long time, where they're wanting to negotiate those fines to get them down. And their intent, they're working with Coldwell Banker Realty here, and the intent is to get the place fixed up and sell it.
So is this the new buyer, somebody that wants to fix it up? Are they going to have to pay all the fees, fines, penalties, and all the...
Well, the new owner's Fannie Mae. I mean, so fixing it up is up to them.
How about the old bank? Do they have to pay...
They didn't do anything, and that's why those fines are all there, because they refused to do anything, and that's why the city had to go forth and do the work for them.
Is there some way we can work it out, that we can assess the fines to people that leave these properties sitting there for, well, extend the period of time?
So we were, so the fines on the property are hefty, and we were in the process of foreclosing. Now Fannie Mae, or not Fannie Mae, the bank before them, I think it's Freedom Mortgage, they had filed just before us, so we just stepped back and let that go through. Now Fannie Mae probably bought the property not realizing what other liens were on there, and now that's what they're trying to do, is negotiate and get all that done, so that it can move forward in the process of getting fixed up. Now, if it sells to be fixed up, because it is pretty rundown, I mean, we, the city has no say in that, but we could put pressure on them if they refuse to do anything and let it go back into a status that is derelict.
Well, I kind of cringe at the thought of just anybody fixing it up. Will they, well, do they have to go to Landmarks to whoever's doing the fixing, I would hope?
I mean, that's, that's up to...
If they're doing anything exterior, they'd have to go to Landmarks, yeah.
Well, I'm concerned about the interior, too. I don't know what the interior's like, but lots of damage can be done by fixer-uppers to interiors.
The interior's in pretty bad shape.
Is it?
It's salvageable.
So has it been messed up, doing the wrong kind of modernizations on it, or is it just...
No, the people that lived in there before were not the most upstanding citizens, and from what I understand from officers of previous calls, there's like a hole in the floor and some other stuff that there's just destruction to the property.
Hmm, that's too bad.
Well, that's too bad we didn't just condemn, seize it, give it, not give it, but get it to somebody that did the right kind of thing, but...
So I've had some complaints going from that 1244 Ferry Street with the unique yard art.
Mm-hmm.
So is there much that we can do on that property?
So currently, with that one, I'm not sure if it's actually seen court, since I've been gone for a month, but we had cited them, and I talked to City Attorney Joseph, and he was in belief that we could. So we have done the front because of what it's made up of, and really it's up to the judge at this point to see where it goes. So, but they have been cited for both the back and the front, because the back is still pretty bad.
Oh, the back is, mm-hmm.
And kind of have to see where it goes from there.
Well, and I guess...
But we are taking action currently.
Yeah, most people's decorations they put out for the holidays, you know, those would not fit in a regular garage or storage shed, so...
No, and I, I...
Quite unique.
Doing some work looking at other cities, just to see, like, limitations of yard art, I couldn't find anywhere within Oregon that had like a yard art code as far as, you know, 12 feet high, or that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So we didn't really go down that path.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We've had other yard art cases over the last 15 years that have come up from time to time, and they've had the same decision each time we've had a complaint about it, and the judge has ruled it yard art rather than jock.
Yeah, wow. Any other questions over the code enforcement report?
Thank you.
All right, okay? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yep, and congratulations on your new little one, so, yeah.
The chief asked me to stay here.
Yeah, Sean has a report on the enhanced law enforcement area.
Right, I thought, since Chris was going to be here tonight, this would be a good opportunity to give a brief update on the enhanced law enforcement area.
Okay.
And just wanted to let everybody know that as, as of right now, the, that area, the enhanced law enforcement area is, is working, we think it's working very well, it's, appears to be acting as a deterrent. We have been successful in prosecuting the underlying crimes that would, would put them on that list for the enhanced law enforcement area, so as to avoid having to cite anyone probably in the last four months under that enhanced law enforcement area, or the chronic persistent violation of, of the area. To my knowledge, we've only had one person who's been actually in front of Judge Scott on this, and like I said, we're, we're focusing more on getting, you know, stricter or stiffer sentences under the underlying crimes that would warrant someone being put on that list, and so far, we think that's been working pretty well. We were sensitive to the fact that the community was, there was a lot of concern when that was created, and we think that the procedure we've been doing so far with APD has been working well, and we're going to keep doing that, so...
Oh, good. So I'm glad, so actually then that ordinance ended up providing some very valuable tools and helping to bring some folks into compliance, so...
Yeah, so far, it's, we think it's worked well.
Well, that's good.
Any questions of Sean on that?
Okay, all right, is that it?
I guess so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have a public hearing, and this will be the public hearing over items one and two. These are for wastewater and water system development charges. And with that, at 7:29 PM, I'll open up the public hearing, and staff have a report.
Rob? We do, I want to open up a, have a few slides to help with the presentation, see if I can get this to work. Okay, so, so are we doing both public hearings for wastewater and water as one, or are we having two separate public hearings?
Yes, yes, I had already opened it up for both hearings.
For both hearings, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, in preparation for tonight's public hearings, we posted the required notifications, and we have not heard, have not received any written notifications for council that taken to, into advisement. So as you're aware, we've been working on the water and wastewater SDC updates for the last several months. It's kind of culminated last month and this month. So last month, we had the public hearings to adopt the wastewater and water methodology reports. Those were adopted, but adopting the methodology reports do not actually adopt the specific SDC fee to charge, and that's what we're doing tonight in the public hearings, is adopting specific, specific SDC fees for both water and wastewater.
Maximum fees.
So for wastewater, the methodology report identified the maximum allowable fee as $7,180, which is a very large increase over the existing charge. So in recognition of that fee being almost more than double what the existing charge is, staff created what we call a funded and unfunded list, and we've developed a revised fee or recommended fee based just off the funded list. And that fee results in a charge of $4,481. So we're bringing that cost down, which is good, but it's still a pretty significant charge, and a pretty significant increase from the existing fee. So council felt comfortable when we went through the work sessions to phase that recommended fee in over a five-year period, kind of step that fee into, into existence, into the recommended fee. So that, that is what we are recommending, is to phase the recommended fee in over a five-year period. But, so the, it's important to note, the resolution tonight just adopts the first year phase-in. It doesn't adopt the recommended, you know, the other, the other year's increases. So those would be a separate council action, which we would bring before council each year for the, for you guys to either, you know, adopt or not to adopt. So I do want to have a few slides, I do want to take a look at. So the current fee is $3,330. The first year phase-in, as you see in the, on the very right-hand column, is $3,560, which represents 79 percent portion of the recommended fee. So we're not, you know, so that first year phase-in would be almost 80 percent of that $4,481. So, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take a look at how we compare with other cities in Oregon, so that's, I have a couple slides, comparison slides. So looking at equivalent dwelling unit, or a single-family dwelling unit, and how we compare to other cities, and the other, names are a little bit difficult to see on the screen, but they're down on the, on the bottom axis, and you see the red bars, the two, the three red bars, the one on the right is the current fee, the one on the very left hand, it's kind of two goalposts, is the recommended fee. That would be the fee that if council phases the fee in over the five-year period, it would be that recommended fee. But tonight, in the current resolution, is just year one, and that's to the, kind of in between those two goalposts, and that's the 3560. So that's for a single-family dwelling. We also have a comparison for a commercial development. In the commercial development, the assumptions are in bold across the bottom. It's a recent development that happened in Albany, probably about two years ago. It's a medical office development. It's about two and a half million dollar develop, cost for development. The assumptions are across the bottom there. So the current fee for that development, commercial development, is $25,000. The recommended fee, which is what would be phased in over a five-year period, the very, very left-hand column's $34,000, but what we'd be adopting tonight for this example development would be $27,000. So this kind of shows a kind of what the resolution, if adopted tonight, would look like for residential and commercial development. And that's all I have for wastewater, but would happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
All right. So for water, water was actually a little bit more simple than wastewater. We did not add any projects to the wastewater methodology, we just simply updated the project cost. So in doing that, we, it resulted in a fee of, of about, got to my notes here, it resulted in a fee of $3,523. We'll show that on the next slide. So, and that's still a significant increase over the existing fee. So we are recommending to also phase in the water fee over a five-year period. And again, just like wastewater, this resolution only adopts the first year phase-in. Subsequent years would come before council for action. So that first year phase-in is shown, is $28,000, that was $2,857. The current fee is $2,690, so we're increasing that a little bit. So we also did community comparisons, so for single-family dwelling, the current fee is shown on the right, the recommended fee is shown on the left, and that would be what would be phased in over the five-year period. And tonight's, the fee in the resolution tonight for a single-family dwelling would be $2,857. We also did a comparison for that same commercial development that we looked at for wastewater, used that same commercial development, and looked at what the fees would be for, for a water SDC fee. And shown on the right, that fee would be $14,338. The recommended fee as phased in over a five-year would be a little over $18,000, and the fee for the first year phase-in is shown as a little over $15,000. There are a couple of issues that were brought up in the first public hearing we had to adopt the methodology, that I can either dive into now, or I can talk to after we have the, the vote on these two, on this public hearing. Okay.
Is that okay, just to wait, or are you wanting to hear it now?
Well, if it doesn't directly have to do with this, we ought to wait until after the hearing, shouldn't we?
It's, it's somewhat related, it's probably...
I don't care.
I can go in and discuss that. So at the public hearing we had last month, there were two issues that were brought up during the public comment period. This had to do with SDC financing and SDC deferment. So with SDC financing, I think the comment was made that the city does not offer financing for SDCs, and we actually, we actually do. I checked with Gina, the finance director in the finance department, we do offer financing. The interest rate is 6.55 percent. It's more, that rate is higher than what folks can obtain in the private market. So that interest rate is not set in stone, that's interest rate that can be adjusted by council, by your, by your action. So just wanted to let you know that that, that, that program is there. It's not used very much, but it, but it is available. And for SDC deferment, right now, SDCs are due and payable upon issuance of a building permit, or a permit to begin construction. Deferment would take that, that key event and put it to another key point in the project, like issuance of occupancy or substantial completion. That, there's right now, as I think Mayor, you are keenly aware, there's legislation available, or currently in Oregon legislature, that, that may affect when SDCs are due and payable for certain projects, so I think any kind of discussion on that, on that topic is a little premature, and if council wants to investigate, you know, when SDCs are due and payable, that can probably be, be better placed at a different time, when legislature is done.
After the session's over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that is it? Any questions?
I have one question, yes. So looking at this date, on July 1st, 2019, would that apply to projects that are currently being in process or submitting paperwork, or is that just everything after that date?
Everything after that date.
So they're grandfathered in, then?
Yeah, so if they, I guess it has to do with issuance of that key event, issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
So if they're in the pipeline but aren't issued a building permit, then, then it would be, they would be due and payable at the time, after July 1st, at the issuance of the building permit.
Okay, so people right now who are, are looking at the current charge, say they submit their paperwork, then if it's not issued by July 1st, then they have to pay the new charges.
That, that's how I understand it, unless...
Just a point of clarification, like if somebody has, going through the land use process now, they're not in the land use approvals, good for five years or whatever it is, they're not grandfathered in, they would pay the fees at the time they came in to, to build or connect to the system. Now, if they've submitted and, and then applied to connect and build, then they would be paying the fees that were in place at the time that they, they submitted.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Rob. Is there anyone that would like to comment for this public hearing, and this is over the wastewater and water system development charges? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, then I will close the public hearing at 7:42 PM. And council, you have a, the wastewater system and development charges has a resolution on page four.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The next one would be the water system development charges, and this is a resolution that's on page 10.
Page 10?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Rob. Okay, next is business from the public, and is there anyone this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, yeah, Daniel?
My name is Daniel Dietz, D-I-E-T-Z. I live at 2818 Northwest Orchard Heights in Albany. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about a porta potty that we have over at First Christian Church, where I'm a member. I'm just going to talk for a minute tonight, because I've been able to reach out to the city manager, who's been great and helped us to set a time to come back on April 8th. But I just wanted to make sure that folks understand kind of what we're asking for and why, just because this issue sometimes starts to seem a little bit bigger than it is, and for us at the church, it's actually pretty simple. If we provide a toilet at the church, then everyone in our neighborhood has a place to go. It gives folks dignity, and it helps to keep the church clean, and for us, that's basically it. It's just common sense, and we think it's the right thing to do. We also understand that there are different perspectives on the issue, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for coming out last night and having a meal with us. I was really, it's, it's the first... I was really, it's the first time, as I told you, I ever got to have dinner with the mayor, and I was pretty excited about that.
Thank you.
But I also, you know, and I admire the compassion you have and the amount of time you've worked hard on, on issues facing homelessness. But I also want to acknowledge that we have different positions. I think that, I understand and I hear your concern about a toilet enabling homelessness or sort of not deterring people from, from other outcomes, but is, is sort of well-lit and clean as we, we can keep the porta potty. I don't think there's anyone out there who's not going to go get a job because of it or who's going to come to Albany from another city because of the porta potty we have at the church. So, I, I also think it's reasonable for us to have different perspectives. I think everyone brings a lot of, a lot of their own perspective to this issue, and I think that's actually why our request to the city is that, not that we vote up or down, we can have a porta potty at the church, not have a porta potty at the church. That to me seems like, that's not necessarily the issue. To me, it's, it's a little bit bigger than that. I think it's worth putting in the time, putting in the, the energy to look at, what are the needs of the city? Who, who, who needs a place in the city to go to the bathroom? What does it make sense to do? For that reason, we think it would make sense actually to have everyone on the council actually put forward someone to get together in a panel, look at the research, get into the data, and that way we can come up with an evidence-based, data-driven solution. I feel like that's a sort of a 21st century approach to the issue, and it gets us away from some of the more emotionally charged issues around here. Because we're not trying to solve all of, all of the problems. We're just trying to figure out how to have a toilet. So, that's all I have to say tonight. I thank you for your time and attention, and look forward to seeing you all on the 8th of April.
Okay, all right.
Question?
Thank you, Daniel. Uh-huh. This will be on a work session on the April 8th, yeah.
There's something to think about in the, in the interim. It's been probably 10 years since I sang in your church. And as I recall, if you come in from the Ferry Street entrance, when you walk in, the sanctuary is kind of to the left, straight ahead into the left, and then there is a hallway kind of straight ahead into the right, is that?
Yeah.
And as you travel down the hallway, there are offices, as I'm recalling, and a couple of bathrooms. What would happen if you made an outside door to one of those bathrooms that's lockable, so when you're there, I mean, you control which way people come in? That they could use and have a locking internal door so that they would be stopped at the hallway, they'd be able to get into the bathroom and use the facilities and go on back out, and it would all go into the correct place in the system instead of being a chemical toilet? Anyway, just, just a thought process to, to think about.
Okay.
Can I, can I say one thing? I visited the church, what, two weeks ago, week, week before that? I'm a softball umpire. I've been to a lot of fields that have porta potties, and it's one of the cleanest porta potties I've been in. So I do appreciate you guys keeping it up and keeping it clean. And I think, I do agree that having a place to use the facilities in a clean and safe manner is, is important. I know we're going to talk about it in the work session, but I do commend you guys for keeping it clean and keeping it lit for people. And I know that especially women with, you know, the biological issues they have to deal with, and they need someplace to take care of themselves. So I appreciate you guys doing that. What's going to happen, I don't know, I said, but I do like the fact that it's a well-lit and well-cleaned facility.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh-huh. Anyone else from business from the public? Yeah, Rebecca.
Rebecca Bond with Albany Visitors Association, and I didn't get a chance to come to your work session to bring you these reports because I had a really important engagement. My daughter is in softball playing, and it was her very first one ever. So, I just wanted to share these reports with you. They're ones that we made for our board. It's kind of a semi-annual snapshot of what we've done in the last six months, and wanted to share those with you, so.
Okay, great.
And Alice, I think you've already seen them.
Yeah, I probably did.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, anyone else from business from the public? Yeah, Sharon? Did you have anything else you wanted to say? Okay, all right, thank you.
How'd the game go?
They tied.
Who'd they play?
Southside.
Nice.
I'm Sharon Geesler, 728 10th Avenue Southwest, and I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, but I wanted to ask the city attorney, we've been waiting for the, the promised report on the enhanced enforcement zone, and I'm hoping that's not the whole report because it wasn't in the agenda. There are many people who are interested in this issue. So, at the time it was passed, we're just about, I think it was March or April, and so we're, we're at a year. So, is there an intent to have a, have that an agenda item or, or some kind of formal report?
No, I don't think we ever envisioned having a formal report done. I think the council asked for an update on the, on how it was affected, if it was working or not.
Well, update, yeah.
Right.
I guess the fact it wasn't on the agenda is kind of concerning.
Yeah, that's, we, we can say it again on an agenda a night where people, more people would want to hear it.
Well, it might be good.
Yeah, we could do that. But numbers-wise, there's really not a lot of numbers, as I was saying. There's only, I believe, one person that's been cited under that. And, you know, we could, we could have Judge Scott here to say there's only been one person, and, you know, we could have the police department come in and talk about it too. But, you know, because of right now, we're really not using it, then there's, there's just not a whole lot to report, really, is that we're just not citing people under it right now, so.
So it's not enforced?
It's not that it's not enforced, it's that we've, we haven't had the issues we were having before, well, some of the, some of the people who were committing, you know, persistent violations in that zone, and the ones that were, what we have focused more on is the underlying...
I understood that you said yes.
Right, and so the, is that more of a deterrent than to basically do nothing and then cite them for persistent violation to keep them out of downtown? So, we're, we're trying to go a different direction with that, so.
And you'll remember that initially, we were going to get back to council after six months.
Right.
And after six months, nobody had been cited under that. So even now, a year later, only one person has been. So, there's really not much more than what you heard Sean report on this evening.
Right, no, I, I'm good with that. I, I, I also, I read the, the city municipal court judge, I heard, I read that too. It, it's just that there is a sense, I think it would be wise for you to put it on the agenda and say it again, because there is, there is a lot of interest in that. So, what you're saying is that it's been successful, and you've got data to, to show that, and it seems like that should be said at the time when people come to hear it.
It's either that or the Democrats' Herald is here, and they might do a report on it, so, so that might, that might address the issue. Yeah. Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay.
No, Your Honor. Do I understand that there are people here who would like to question the situation with the pump station?
Right.
And you mentioned to me the possibility of having the staff report on that and then have comments from the public.
Yeah.
Are you still of a mind to do that?
We can, we can go ahead and move that. I didn't see anybody coming, I just see there's two couples here that are, live in the neighborhood, but what we can do is go ahead and move that item up, and, and then if anybody had, wanted to comment on it or, you know, they can do so. So, Jeff, would you like to report on that?
May I just ask you real quick, just out of a quick moment, that I've asked the staff to expand on their report tonight, to provide a little bit of the history of outreach efforts. So, at your last meeting, you heard questions from residents of the area or a resident, and so tonight I've asked them to answer some of those questions and address those concerns. So it'll be more than just a description of the project, but actually a look back at the outreach efforts that have been undertaken as well.
Yeah, Stacy will be providing the report tonight. There's also some questions that were forwarded on to Counselor Olson that were asked of staff to answer, and so Stacy will include responses to those questions in her report as well.
Great. It's very helpful to have questions ahead of time, so that's very helpful.
Yeah, I appreciated that. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Before I get started, I am going to apologize. I'm going to be referring back to my notes quite a bit, just because of the, based on what we have been asked to present tonight, there's a lot of information, and I want to be, make sure that I'm able to convey all the information that I have in my outline. I thought I should start out this presentation with a reminder of what the purpose of the project is. So the, this project is, includes construction of a wet weather lift station and a forced main. The project is required to relieve, I guess, increased capacity on the Riverfront Interceptor downstream from Montgomery Street in order to avoid sanitary sewer overflows. It's going to increase the capacity of the Riverfront Interceptor. One of the, the issues that I think are a confusing thing with the terminology of wet weather is people hear that and they, they may think it's a stormwater project. That's not the case. This project is going to include, include construction of improvements that are going to be dealing with wastewater or untreated sewer. That being said, stormwater is a driver for the need for the project. During high groundwater periods and heavy storm events, despite our best efforts to stop it, water does find a way into our sewer pipes, sometimes to the point where it overwhelms the sewer system, and that results in sanitary sewer overflows. Depending on the circumstances, these overflows can be permit violations, and in addition, they're subject to DEQ enforcement. The city could also be vulnerable to claims of violating the Clean Water Act. In fact, because of some, the sanitary sewer overflows that have resulted on the Riverfront Interceptor and into the environment, the releases of untreated sewage into the, to the environment, wastewater doesn't get to the treatment plant prior to discharge. Even when the driver is inflow and infiltration, it's what we call INI, and the, the wastewater is diluted, that's still not an excuse that doesn't get us off the hook. So we're still liable for, for fines. Staff has discussed with council over the years, these unpermitted overflows, and they were the, the overflows from the River Interceptor. They've been an issue over the years, and these past enforcement actions were one of several issues that were the driver that required that we build our new wastewater plant, the Albany Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility. As we've discussed with council at past meetings, the city has gone to great lengths to try to address sanitary sewer overflows, provide relief to the Riverfront Interceptor in hopes of avoiding a costly project on the Riverfront Interceptor. These improvements have included INI reduction targeted to contributing basins. We rerouted the North Albany Lift Station, Forced Main, and the Oak Creek Lift Station, Forced Main, so that they no longer sent flow to the Riverfront Interceptor. We've also made improvements to the 31st Avenue Lift Station, and then other capacity-increasing You know, these projects were all needed for, for many reasons, and the, the projects did help increase capacity on the Riverfront Interceptor, but even with, with that said, it didn't remove enough flow from the interceptor to increase capacity to avoid sanitary sewer overflows that are subject to enforcement from DEQ. So we have been able to significantly, significantly reduce the scope of improvements that are going to be required to the Riverfront Interceptor, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to eliminate the need for an improvement. So we have had a number of conversations with council about the RFI, have, and they've been happening in public in many forms over several decades. It's not a new problem that we are solving, but the wet weather lift station enforcement, that is a new solution that we spoke about recently. And then recently, I mean, like during the past three years. I'm not going to go over the long history of public meetings and outreach that, that we've had, but I do want to go over the timeline where we were able to develop this cost-saving alternative. So, in March of 2015, we completed a wastewater collection facility plan that identified a number of high-priority projects that were needed in the wastewater system in order to increase capacity and reduce sanitary sewer overflows. We provided the facility plan to council at a work session meeting, and then staff also provided a presentation. During the meeting, the RFI was identified as a high-priority project. It came at a very high cost. Replacing the pipeline was estimated to be over $20 million. During the meeting, staff let council know that we were working with a consultant on cost-saving alternatives in order to identify cost savings in order to construct the improvement. We came back to council later that year, in August, to discuss funding strategy for the Riverfront Interceptor and the other high-priority projects that had been identified in the facility plan. And at that time, we shared with council that we had identified a cost-saving alternate that would save upwards of $5 million compared to the original project, and that was the current project, which includes construction of the wet weather lift station at the project site and the forced main. And, and as a reminder, the cost, cost, the alternative analysis that was completed, it did look at other potential sites to, to locate the lift station. The, the location of the, the lift station at Wet Well, it needs to be just downstream of Montgomery. So there are limited locations where this lift station can be cited. So, in order to avoid having to replace the Riverfront Interceptor from Montgomery all the way to the plant, we have to be able to remove the flows that are coming in from the Montgomery Interceptor, and then also the Riverfront Interceptor at this specific location. Otherwise, the cost-saving alternative wouldn't work. There were other properties where we looked at citing the lift station, but they would come at an increased cost, anywhere between $1 and $2 million, just because of the additional improvements, environmental concerns, and property acquisition costs. Let's see, I lost track in my notes. You know, and then the other, other reason is the selected site was less complicated because the city did own the property, and so we didn't have to go through property acquisition. So even with the reduced project cost, after we completed the alternatives analysis, we still didn't have a funding strategy for the Riverfront Interceptor because even at $13 million, it was hard to identify funds where we could construct the project. However, in 2016 and in 2017, we continued to discuss the project. The Riverfront Interceptor project was described in the CIP document as a high priority, but it was a, it was a community need, but it was unfunded. All of these processes, the CIP process, do go through public meetings, there's public hearings, and then they're adopted at council. We were fortunately able to identify a funding source for the Riverfront Interceptor project. That was in July of 2017, and at that time, staff went to council requesting authorization to apply for a loan through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The following month, in August of 2017, staff requested that council initiate a vacation process for Geary Street. This was needed because even though the project site is a city-owned property, it was acquired using state park money and so... And so, when it's used for anything other than a park, there's a conversion process that has to happen. And so, that was what the vacation process was required for. Vacating a property is a land use proceeding and it requires public notices, public hearings at both planning commissions and council meetings. With these notices and at these meetings, project maps and descriptions of the project were provided. I believe Hasso even wrote a blog about, about the project or about looking for funds at this point. In 2017, we were finally able to identify the Riverfront Interceptor Wet Weather Lift Station project as a funded project in the city's CIP. And then it was included in the fiscal year 18, 19 budget. Again, both of these, CIP and the budget, go through a, a public process where people have an opportunity to comment. In February 2018, council passed a resolution where they accepted the loan from DEQ. And I believe at this meeting, we discussed the location of the electrical building and councillor Olson, I believe, that the discussion about not having a fence around the building came up during that meeting as well. So, both the Democrat Herald and Hasso hearing had write-ups about the project following the council meeting where we accepted the loan. And then that was when, in April, the Public Works Director Jeff Blaine was contacted by a resident of the Ironworks Townhouses who was interested in the project. They had concerns about the, the impacts of the project. Jeff talked with this resident on the phone and then suggested that they meet with, with me. And I met with them a few days later to talk about their concerns. I provided them copies of project documents, including the technical memorandum that discussed the, the alternative analysis and then agreed to keep them up to date as the project moved along. In July, I was again contacted by this resident and provided six additional copies of the documents that they could share with their neighbors.
So, that was still in April?
Pardon?
That was still in April?
That was in Ju- July. So, I know it seems like a lot of time passed between April and July, but at that point, we were drafting the request for proposal in order to hire a consultant to design the project.
No, it's 2017?
Or 2018.
Wait.
So, in July of 2018, council awarded a design contract to West Yost Consultants. Based on feedback that I had received during the meeting with the townhouse resident and from council, we made sure to include a requirement that the electrical building was designed so that it aesthetically fit in with the neighborhood. I guess this is a good time to just point out that the, so, up until this point, I had been managing the project, but then Chris Serkluski, who is one of our lead engineers in our department, he took over managing the design and construction of the project. Chris, once we had a design consultant onboard, Chris sent out a mailing. We sent out over 200 letters to all the properties that front the Riverfront Interceptor project, letting them know that design was starting, they would see surveyors out working. And then Chris also provided contact information if anybody had questions about the project. I also followed up and I emailed the townhouse, townhouse resident that I had previously met with. I wanted to make sure that they received the letter that Chris had sent out and just share that he was going to be the project manager moving forward and they could still contact me, but he would probably have more project details. So, from September on, a pre-design effort went on. The consultants, architect, they created an architectural rendering. We provided it to our, the Ironworks Townhouse resident and then met in December, well, actually on December 14th, with a lot of residents of the townhouses to discuss their concerns. A rendering of the building was provided at that meeting as well as some of the 60% plan sheets that we had just recently received that month. During the meeting, the residents asked staff to look at moving the electrical building and a suggestion was made, could we look at the Montgomery Street right away? And so, we agreed to look at that option. Over the last couple of months, there has been coverage of the proposed project and additional correspondence with the residents of the townhouses. We were able to confirm with the residents after consulting with the electrical engineer, Pacific Power and the civil engineer, that we were in fact going to be able to relocate the electrical building to their suggested location. We have also provided a site map and the 90% construction drawings to the residents. We have not received any feedback on the aesthetic aspects of the building based on the renderings or the 90% drawings that we've provided other than, I mean, I guess, the building just needs to go away. And then, I think Peter, you noted that I should also respond to questions that had been provided to councillor?
Sure, if you can.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the questions. So, there's some questions that were provided to councillor Olson. Question one, "Is it possible to move the electrical building to a less intrusive location such as under the Lyons or Ellsworth Bridges or the vacant lot between First and Second?" And the, the vacant lot, I'm assuming, is on Montgomery Street. Well, the answer is no. The, the location, we, the lift station has to be sited at the location just west of Montgomery in order to remove the flows upstream of the Riverfront Interceptor and also the flows from the Montgomery Interceptor. So, it's not possible to, to move it to another location. The other thing, we talked with the electrical engineer and the building can only be up to 150 feet away from the pumps. So, the, these are 135 horsepower pumps and the electrical equipment that's needed to control them. There's technical issues if you try to locate it further away. The Lyons Bridge is 800 feet away and the Ellsworth Bridge is approximately 1,100 feet away. So, there are technical limitations that prevent further relocation from, from Montgomery Street.
Did you say 150 feet or 450?
150 feet. Question two, "Could the entire project be relocated closer to Montith and Bryant Parks where actual flooding occurs?" And I, I think I've already addressed this. It's, it's not a stormwater project and for technical reasons, it does need to be located just east of the Montgomery overflow on Montgomery Street. In order to, for the project to work to prevent unpermitted overflows of untreated sewer to the Willamette, the project can't be relocated. "How does staff explain pump house maps not being to scale?" So, I'm, so I'm just kind of speculating here. The 90% design drawings we shared with residents of the townhomes, they were drawn to scale. They show the building, site layout and underground infrastructure. The architectural rendering, rendering we provided was not to scale. It was intended more to represent the aesthetics for their review and comment. The site layout schematic was only a schematic, but the components that are shown on it, they are proportionate. But we didn't provide the drawing at a scale. We could. But, but I guess it's important to know that what's shown on that is proportionate. Question four, "How does the city justify not seeking community input into a large-scale project and building a large structure in a heavily-used portion of the Dave Clark Path?" I think that based on prior discussion, there has been quite a bit of public process around this project and staff has been responsive to concerns. We responded to their request to move the electrical building to Montgomery Street in response to the, to the building in front of the townhouses.
Well, yeah, at that, at this point, can I ask a question? Did you neighbors see this thing that Hasso had in his, in his blog? And did you see that before Hasso sent it out? And they say, no, they didn't. So, I'm wondering what happened there? And you're familiar with this?
Yeah, we did send that to the neighbors.
And you had this at the time that I came down to talk to you?
No, councillor Olson. So, when, when Chris and I spoke with you, at that time, we were still waiting to hear back from the power company to see if they could provide service at the Montgomery Street location.
And you talked to the neighbors over there after you talked to me?
Yes. I mean, it was, I, I, I reviewed, like, I talked with Chris. I reviewed our notes and so I think we spoke with you. The next day, we heard from Pacific Power and then I think Hasso reached out to us. And then at that point, I asked Chris, we need to have a, we need to develop a map that shows this revised location. And so...
And you showed that map to the neighbors?
Yes. It was provided to the neighbors in an email.
Oh, I wish you would have invited me.
Yeah, in hindsight, we probably should have included you on the, on the email.
I think I showed some concern there.
Number five.
Oh, could you tell I was trying to? Question five, "How does the city justify requesting the project land from state parks for this project and not soliciting community input?" So, the, the city of Albany did already own the land. Due to how the land was secured, we did have to obtain approvals from state parks. This was done in a public process where we communicated to council.
I guess point there being, it was not a state park. It was our property.
Yes, correct.
We just received it from the state.
"Has local law enforcement been notified of the project and has their evaluation for location and safety been solicited?" So, staff has worked across departments on this project. The project has been coordinated with the police department, the parks department, and we reached out to economic development staff in response to feedback we have received from them. We are pursuing design modifications. A deeper foundation is going to be constructed on the riverside of the building. I guess there's issues with people tunneling under buildings and so we're going to be providing a deeper foundation on the riverside. And then we also will be providing wall-mounted lighting on all sides of the building. So, at this point, I think that catches up to where during last council meeting, a request was made to do a presentation on what the about, above-ground appearance of the structure is going to be. Jeff has a package of the, the drawings that I'm going to go ahead and put up on the screen here as well, that he'll pass out to council.
So, what goes into this building? Is it switch gears or what kind of stuff?
The electrical building is going to house. There's variable frequency drives for each pump. There's motor control panel. There's a harmonic filter. There's flow meters. There's going to be a transfer switch.
They already, or Jeff already handed them out, Dick.
Jeff, can you see the maps on the screen? I'm trying to click on my...
Can you give one to Kathy, Dick?
To who?
Oh.
Thank you.
I still got one.
I wonder if I can tap through. Oh, I can do that.
She may not have one.
All right. So, this is the updated site, site layout. This is a drawing that Chris Serkluski developed. He went ahead and rubber sheeted the improvements from the engineered drawings, put them on an ortho photo and then identified the above-ground improvements. It shows moving the electrical building to the Montgomery right away and then also shows the path being relocated. We thought that this would be useful for people to look at. Sometimes when you're looking at engineered drawings, it's hard to see exactly what's going to be happening on the ground.
Question? It says underground sewer lift station, et cetera. Underground, is that with grass over the top of it? Or is that with a concrete pad?
A concrete pad.
And it stands out, what, a couple of feet?
It should be flush with the ground.
Any entrances from the top?
There will be access hatches in order to, I mean, sometimes you have to remove the pumps to do maintenance.
Right, sure.
Is there any other questions on this drawing before I...
So, does, did we need approval from the railroad?
We are working with the railroad company, yes.
And is the pipe going to the sewer disposal plant? Does that come under the railroad right at that point?
Um, let's see. So, here's the diversion. This is the diversion structure. This is actually going to be constructed on top of the existing Riverfront Interceptor, which actually, it would have been nice to show that pipe so that pad runs.
But it's not really...
This way. So, the diversion structure, it will, there'll be a gate that will allow us to divert the flow here where it'll gravity flow into the lift station. And then there's submersible pumps in the lift station that'll pump it to the force main. The force main runs down Water Avenue, Geary Street and then Front Avenue where it will tie into Davidson.
So, I mean, this might not be real pertinent, but, so how many feet? And I know you might not know this, but is it to the actual top of the riverbank? The only thing I question is when you're digging down low, you know, the more soil can be, you know, disturbed that's close to a riverbank, we don't ever want during high flood events to erode away the, the riverbank. So, is that taken into consideration?
It is. So, there's an engineered plan, shoring plan where we'll be drilling H pile in and then there'll be still sheets that are going to be placed between the pile and that will keep the, the soil stable.
Stable, okay.
Sheet by...
I just remembered during the '96 flood, we thought we were going to lose our senior center. You know, because remember the bank was eroding away.
Yeah. Well, and, and you know, because of the deep excavation, we definitely... Yeah, well, and, and, you know, because of the deep excavation, we definitely want to be constructing this during the dry weather, you know, preferably in July, August, September.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next.
This is the water colored architectural rendering that was provided in December.
And this was how tall?
It is inside, it's approximately nine and a half feet with the pitched roof. It's going to add an additional three and a half feet.
Foot and a half. Three and a half? That's a lot.
That's pretty steep, yeah.
That's, that's a, that's a steep roof at all. Looks like about a.
Three one, I mean.
Not even that much.
No, probably two and a half to one.
Probably two, two and a half to one.
Maybe it's two and a half. It seems like it was, I'm remembering three and a half, it, it probably is two and a half.
So the condos are on, looking, this is looking out of the condos down onto it?
No.
Right there?
That's kind of looking from, from Montgomery Street.
This is over here.
Yeah, so here's the condos, this is the.
This is the building on top of the wall. It's not even in their sideline.
No, it's not in the sideline.
The second yellow.
This is the electrical building, that red.
Above ground.
But that's.
So the building that's a concern about is the yellow one, right?
Yes.
But the first building on water back there, that, that is the art studio. So the, the little dormers are where the townhouses are. The rooftop dormers.
Yeah, those dormers, I know what those are, yeah.
Okay.
The old hair and works building.
Yeah.
Okay, and Sharon, I listened to the council meeting, and I think something that you asked for is like, what's it going to look like in the ground? So this is my best effort to try to, to show what the, the, I guess, from different vantage points, what, where the electrical building will be.
So is that about nineteen feet wide then, do you think, on that little square?
Yeah, it's not to scale. I mean, it's definitely just provides a, an idea. I wasn't able to, to get a scaled drawing, so it's not a 3D building, but it, but it at least kind of gives you line of sight. In, in this photo, I was standing on the easternmost side of the condos, looking westward. And then, oh.
Yeah, that helps.
Here's, standing in Montgomery Street, just looking north.
That's not the wheelhouse.
What's that?
This is right here.
Oh, that's up there.
That's, this is where they started carving the.
So the yellow outline indicates for the outline of the building?
Correct. And then this is standing on the western edge of the, the townhouses.
So we'll have to move the, the lamp post?
Yes, the, yeah, the, the pass is going to have to be rerouted, and then the, the lighting on, along the Dave Clark path will, will be rerouted.
Okay.
So at this point, I mean, if council has questions, I can answer questions. I guess I do want to share, we had the 90% review meeting today. Unless directed otherwise by council, the plan is to move forward with the project and bid in mid-April. You know, any delays or major changes, there will be consequences. I don't know if council at this point wanted to talk about those, or.
Just have.
Yeah, Rich.
Well, as I'm looking where I can see the edge of the bank is, I mean, there is not a lot of other place to put the lift station. I mean, there just isn't. If you're having to dig down, you probably have to go down, what, twenty feet or something like?
Thirty.
Thirty feet? I mean, you don't want to get very close to the, the bank. And you have to be within where, where you have the two mains come together. That's just with, that's just where it has to be, because water flows downhill. Yes, as far as the, the electrical building, you know, it looks like you're, you're orienting it so it has the least obnoxious view. I mean, as far as it's, it's going the long way away from people who would be looking at it. And frankly, right now, I don't think you can see the river. I have, I have complained a number of times that as we drive along Water Avenue, we're missing the river, because all the brush and the everything is there during the, during the spring and summer. Why couldn't we get our, hint, hint, why couldn't we get our tree people to tell us how much we can trim those up before we get in trouble?
I'd love it, then they'd leave my trees alone.
Well, you know, I got a chainsaw, we can fix yours.
I've got three chainsaws.
Well. Anyway, I, I don't have, you know, if you can't sink the electrical building into the ground, and where it's at, there's not a whole lot of space, I don't see we have a lot of choices. I'm good.
So can you tell me the impact of us not doing it? That's something I had, and I don't think anybody's heard, so, at least I haven't heard it, I'm new to this whole thing, so if we don't do it in the next year, two years, what is the impact of us not doing it?
So, you know, if, if we don't make the improvements, then we would continue to have sanitary sewer overflows. We've had two since the, since December.
Okay. So it's a public safety issue?
We've had overflows this year?
Yes.
So why are we arguing about this? So it's a public safety issue, and we need to address it before it gets worse? Is that what I'm hearing?
We, we need to fix it so it doesn't continue the way it is. I mean, it's, how many times do?
And we get fined when we have overflows.
You can't get fined.
So ultimately, we'll get fined more and more as things progress and get worse. So the way to mitigate that is to resolve the problem now, whether it's aesthetics or whatever, we still have to fix it no matter what.
We do. I mean, Jeff can chime in, but I know that we've negotiated with DEQ for a number of these sanitary sewer overflows, and so the expectation is that we are going to be doing what we've negotiated with DEQ in order to address them.
So we didn't get fined in the past.
Because we have a project in the works.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, Stacy, yeah, Dick?
So the pumps run 400 volt approximately.
Four eighty.
Yeah, they're four eighty-three phase.
And I'm surprised that they can't, can't go more than 150 feet away from the electrical building, between the two buildings. What, what, what do we do for power in some of these subdivisions where the power is underground? Are those all less than?
Yes, two thousand.
Two hundred, or less than 400 volts?
Yeah, the power draw that, for these pumps, when they turn on, is extremely significant.
Well, yeah, a whole bunch of amps, but it's still only about 400 volts.
Yeah, and they're. They're 135 horsepower pumps. Moving, moving the, the controls further away is going to, I mean, it's going to increase the voltage drop along the power lines, and so there's going to be, you know, technical consequences.
I, I'm not arguing that, that you're wrong, but it just seems strange to me that, that this electrical building can't be further west, because the buildings on west of Montgomery Street here, they're just industrial buildings with no windows at all face the river. And if you can move it another hundred feet or so further west, it would be, it would remove the problem.
One of the reasons that, why it worked to move it to the location that it is, is because it's in right of way and not on, on park property. I don't know that we would have that opportunity if we moved it farther west. If you were moved, to move it farther west, we'd have to basically stop our project and renegotiate to relocate on a different part of Park's property, and we'd have to renegotiate, negotiate our loan schedule in order to accommodate that, if they were to, if the DEQ was to approve of that.
Well, you're saying that the Montgomery Street right of way extends across the railroad tracks and to the river? Montgomery Street right of way?
It does, yes.
Well, that's me, I could go 20 feet maybe.
Well, 135.
Still be in the right of way.
135 horse motor is going to have six, 700 amps of inertia.
Yeah, then you need a bigger wire.
If you're talking about 500 MCM or, you know, 483 volts. And then, because they're a, they're a variable frequency drive, you're also talking about lowering the frequency if, as the further you go. Which, I don't know what it is, but if, Dick, if you just look at the picture, see the, the width of the green? It narrows significantly as you go further west.
I see lots of green here, what are you talking about, the bank?
Oh, okay. The, just a second, I'll show you. You see, the, the bank comes out like this, goes in, and then narrows back down over here. There's less, less space the further, further you go that way.
You can hit the plus button up there and make it bigger.
Yeah, but you can move it.
The bank's closer.
Sure. We're going to move the path anyway.
The plus button up there?
And we just slide this down.
Center top.
Center top. There you go.
Anyway, we don't have an electrical engineer in the audience, I'm sure, so. But I think about putting 220 out to my garage. And so I, I figured I'd have to put conduits from the house to the garage, and then the engineer says, oh, no, you just, just throw those wires in the ground and cover them up. And, and then a conduit that comes out of the, up into the garage, and a conduit that goes up into the house. And I was kind of surprised, because it really doesn't take much to transport 220. Why should it take that much to transport 440?
Dick, and totally different, but.
Dick, it's.
I wish we had an electrical engineer that could.
Dick, it's totally different, okay? You can't go a distance from the point of use without a disconnect and a means to control it. When you start running stuff that far away from a VFD, you start getting into other issues with the technical operation of the VFD. And you also start getting in trouble with what's called the NEC, which is the National Electrical Code that has to be followed. So the reason he can't go any farther is many, many issues, okay? It's not like throwing 220 in the ground and calling it good. The, the VFDs on this are critical, and they're sensitive, and they're probably cost, for a seven, for 135 horse motor, they're probably running in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 20,000 dollars each, okay? And when they burn them up, it's not a good thing. So the NEC starts to come into play with the distance from the pumps or the point of use to where the control is. That's where the problem starts to get very, very large.
Okay, so council, have any more questions of Stacy?
Thank you, Stacy.
I'm good.
Okay. So I know there was a couple of the neighbors here, the Greens and Minnards, did you have any comments or questions? Okay, can you come up, Courtney, you'll have to come? Yeah. All right, yeah. We got to have the microphones, got to pick you up, so, and then you'll need to state your name and address.
I'm Courtney Minyard, I'm at 316 Water Avenue Northeast, Albany, Oregon, 97321. Okay, okay. So thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for listening last week, I really appreciate that, or two weeks ago, and I appreciate Stacy and Jeff preparing and giving us some information tonight. We've referenced fines, this has kind of been batted around, we've referenced fines, stating could, in Stacy's report. However, Stacy stated to the group that no fines had been accrued, because it was really about having a, a project, not a plan specifically, but that we were working on a plan. And so, did I understand tonight that they're now staying, stating that there have been fines that have accrued? Did I misunderstand that? Did she now say?
In the, in the past?
Because they stated to us, there have been no fines.
There are no fines because they have said in the past, what are you doing about this? And now, it's, something is being done about it, so they say, I mean, that.
Since we're pressing that.
They're trying to defer the problem because we're doing something about it.
Awesome, I just wanted some clarification, because it was stated could to us, and it was stated could in her report. However, I thought that that had been discussed a little deeper, that maybe she had said that there was now fines.
I wanted to provide a quick clarification, because I think there's some important distinctions to make. So as Stacy said, this issue along the riverfront interceptor's been going on for decades, and so past enforcement actions related to both overflows and then issues at the treatment plant, the prior treatment plant that we had before the new one was constructed, were in, were a combined issue of enforcement from DEQ and resulted in an agreement between DEQ and the city to take certain actions to alleviate the problems, one of which was constructing the new treatment plant. At the time, many, many years ago, the thought was that when the treatment plant was constructed, that overflows would cease. That didn't happen. We've continued to have, continued to have overflows. The other problems were solved, but the overflows have persisted. So we've continued to have those overflows, we have to continue to report those to DEQ, we have to tell DEQ what we are doing about it. Obviously, as of late, we've been telling them, we're doing, you know, we're doing this project. We have not received additional fines yet from DEQ for the recent overflows. We could, at any point in time, receive those fines, but we have not to date.
And I am aware, I did a little research on other cities, and the same kind of predicament, as long as they had something that they were trying to work on and communication on a regular, updated basis that DEQ provided or required. There's a lot of local cities on the Willamette River, so there are several cities that have different projects than the project that we have elected to choose, to create. And there have been a lot of projects that have been trial and error, that have not succeeded, as Portland would tell you. So there are a lot of options, this is the option that we elected as a city. I have a couple of statements before I want to make, before I, when I ask a couple more questions, but first of all, to the city and the council, I'm not arguing the project. I absolutely love a river, and I spend a lot of time on it in the summer. I can't, you can see it on the trail, I walk it regularly with my three-year-old niece and have since she was born, I see, I get to, I get to spend every Monday with her until the last few Mondays, and, and we walk that very regularly all the way to Bryant Park, but you have to leave the trail and, and kind of get around it, but, but I really appreciate the trail. So I'm not arguing the project, because I love the trail and I love the river, just arguing the location, which currently creates, the, the current path creates, I believe, integrity, not only for our river, but also for our downtown and for the safety, and I'm also arguing it because of the safety to our community for the use of that riverfront path. It's very short, comparable to Eugene or other cities, and, and I think that it's very beautiful, and it brings something to our city. Unlike my neighbors, even though I love them dearly and they all have a vision, I'm less concerned about the view from my home. I look at the wheelhouse and I think it's beautiful, but I'm more concerned about the barrier in which it creates an unsafe environment. And I know that, because I'm Alice Kravitz, and I look out it, at it every day, and I watch the community walk and use our path, and I counted them before the last time I visited, I had 62 passerby's on that single day, which was snow and rainy and yucky, and that was fewer than most days. So my other question is, what was the rationale for eliminating the location of lift station east of the wheelhouse, which is a wider area and is less used and accessed? Why would we choose this location, which is the, I call it the head with the sign, with Dave's sign there? Why would we pick this location? I get the interceptors there, it has to be below the interceptor, because the river flows that direction, there are a lot of river below that section. Why did we choose this one?
If the two come together.
Jeff?
Stacy, you'll have to remind me on the alternatives analysis, is the other two sites that were evaluated, are they, one of those two, the ones, one that she's referring to? Okay. So, I'd have to go back and, and read the alternatives analysis from 2015 in order to respond to what that is, but there's, as we said, there's a, there's a limited geographic area that, that it can be located in. You have to pick up the flows from, from different points. If you're going to move farther downstream, you would have to replace pipe between where the project currently is located and any other place downstream that you would want to put it, thereby increasing your, your project cost and, and impact.
Okay.
I understand it would increase project cost. To what extent, I think, is my question, because of the fact that it's such a pertinent part of where that trail begins. If you, if you spend any time at River Rhythms, you know that wheelhouse parking lot is completely full. If you're at the movie night, it's, it's full with children. And for us to create, put a barrier or a building there is very saddening to me because I think it will eliminate, to some degree, the feeling of safety in our downtown area and access to those events. The actual size of the building, they're saying on the, on the project sheet that it's based on the scale of, that it's based to scale. However, the path I measured is four foot six inches, and some, and my understanding is the builder, building is much larger than that. And when you look at the picture, the little yellow box that we're discussing is significantly bigger than four foot six or eight foot twelve, or nine feet. And the building has been stated to be much larger than that. So, the, what I'm talking about scale, and what I've been concerned about in scale, is that that little yellow square does not match what the di- dimensions that have been shared.
Almost an exact replica of that drawing's provided in the ninety percent drawings that, that were provided to you and the other residents, and those drawings are to scale. There's also a bar scale on the bottom of those drawings, so if you were to print it out at a different size than the plan sheet, you would be able to make that work for you.
Okay.
So, the exact same relationship is there. It's just, the other piece is an easier communication tool for most people to, to work with, so we try to develop simpler tools for people to understand. If you're comfortable looking at the engineering plans with scales, everything that, that you're interested in should be on those drawings you already have.
Okay.
Can you tell me the dimensions of the underground sewer list station? This building here.
It's underground, Dave.
Well, I know it is.
No, no, no.
We have a, a view of it, and we have a view of the area of it, and then we have an overhead view of the ten-by-nineteen-foot control building. And we could get a comparison. Oh, well, if you have to go upstairs to get it, forget it. I mean-
The electrical building itself.
The underground.
So, did you want a copy of, like, the wet well or the electrical still?
Well, she, Ms. Minyard is completely commenting on the size of the electrical building compared to the path. And I would say if we can, okay, well, I'm very impressed.
That shows the footprint of the electrical building.
And that's all drawn to scale.
Yes.
So, the path there is, looks like is more like ten feet wide rather than four feet wide?
We did increase it to ten feet because we're, we now are multi-use paths. We're building ten feet wide.
Okay. So, does that answer the question?
That does, but that one does not. So, that's why I was asking that, because that does.
Yeah, yeah, well, this-
That one does not.
This path, this rendering of the path is not a four-foot wide rendering.
Right.
Yeah. And that's, that's the, that's the error difference.
Okay. So, my final question is, we're talking about a hundred and fifty feet. It's, it's inches, it's whatever, but are we making sure if we're going to be doing this, which, again, the building itself is not my concern, it's the location and creating safety. I'm gonna say that over and over, but, uh, but are we making sure it's accurately a hundred and fifty from its farthest, from its closest point to its farthest point? Can we assure that we are doing that for my neighbors? Because that's important.
You can measure it off, you can scale it off.
That's what I want to know, because I didn't get that copy.
You can scale it off those drawings, and you'll know right away.
Okay.
All the residents received the copies of the, the ninety percent plan, so if you-
Maybe I didn't see that one. I apologize.
We can resend those to you if you'd like them.
Right, Jeff?
I don't, do you know if we're at a hundred and fifty feet or where at? There's other constraints that have to be balanced. It's not, there's not just one parameter to balance against, so.
So, the, the other existing improvements that are located within-
Sorry, Stacy. There's other existing improvements that are located within this existing Montgomery, the Montgomery right-of-way, including the Montgomery overflow. There's manhole structures, so there's, there's improvements that, that can't be moved. So, we did move it as far as way, as we could within that Montgomery right-of-way. Okay. Well, thank you for letting me ask my questions. Still not a hundred percent satisfied, but maybe I won't ever be. But I do appreciate the process, and I hope the council will look seriously at the safety issue, what this brings to our community and our children and our future, even though it will benefit our river in that location, but I believe it could benefit our community farther downstream on the river as well, and also not impede what we already have that's safe and beautiful for our community. So, thanks.
Thank you, Courtney, and thank you also for your support of our riverfront and, and downtown and community. Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to comment on the interceptor yet test?
My name's Tessa Green. I live at three-forty Walter Avenue, and I just want to ask a very straightforward question. Is there going to be the possibility for landscaping to relieve some of the ugliness of this project? Can we plant some trees, bushes, something to mitigate it?
I hope so. I think I brought that up last time.
Stacy, you want to respond?
Yes, we'll certainly look at planting landscaping to, to help mitigate the, the impacts of the project. You know, we will be consulting with Parks Department and our police department to make sure that, that what's proposed doesn't-
Will be safe.
Works, yeah.
The other thing I wanted to say is when Courtney mentioned the east, the plot of land east of the wheelhouse building, my understanding is it belongs to Lippman, and he's planning to put an apartment dwelling there, and that is why we couldn't put it there. That's what I thought. Am I wrong? Do you know about that?
Off topic.
Because, I mean, that is the ideal place, in my opinion, to put it, because it's doing nothing, that land. And if it's not true that it belongs to somebody else, and it could have been purchased, it seems to me, it would have been the perfect place. I just wonder whether that was considered or why it was rejected. It, it just, there it is. It's just a piece of vacant land. Wouldn't bother anybody to have all of this stuff there. So, I don't, I, I wanted to follow up on Courtney's comment because I don't think that was addressed. I mean, it wasn't properly answered.
I think it was when they mentioned about the 2015 alternatives analysis of where the location should be. So, most likely, that was going to be too far east, but, but Jeff said that he would look at that analysis that was done back then.
Yeah, I don't know-
So, we can reassure that.
Too far east in terms of the pumping and, and the whole-
Yeah.
Water project.
And the, the basis of the project is diverting flow just west of Montgomery, and so the diversion structure has to be constructed where it's currently sited. And in order to divert flow from the Riverfront Interceptor to a point east of the, the wheelhouse to the Lippman property, it would require construction of a gravity sewer line that would, at its point, be twenty-two feet deep, and then it would just increase until it gets to the site. I don't know exactly what the distance is between the projects.
So, in other words, there are technical reasons why that couldn't be put there? Is that the engineering and technical reasons?
And increased cost, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Anything, any other comments over the interceptor? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Stacy, did you have anything else for us?
No.
Okay. All right. Anything, council?
Well, I'd like to thank Stacy for a real comprehensive report.
You're welcome. Yep. Thank you. And thank the neighbors, too, so thank you. Okay. That was the last item that was left after business from the public. So, now, our next item is D. This is the first reading of ordinance.
May I make a comment, please, real quick, mayor?
You can. This is on page fourteen and fifteen.
There's no emergency clause in this ordinance, so if the council's desires to have it go into effect immediately, we do have a copy on your dais to, that does contain the emergency clause. So, it's a difference of whether you want the change from a misdemeanor to a violation to happen immediately, or if we can wait for a month.
And, well, I can-
The emergency.
Well, the emergen- go ahead, if you want.
Well, I don't like the term emergency, even though that's the one that we use, is currently, right now, because we have a conflict, this is something that should have happened when we changed the other one, and it got overlooked because it was in the park statutes, and didn't realize that it was there when they changed this one. So, currently, right now, the overnight camping is a crime, so the officer could physically arrest somebody and remove them from the park and take them to jail, where our intent was to make it a violation last year and also reduce the fine. We meant to do that to all of it, not realizing that this one was still there and that one hadn't been done. So, the reason to make it the emergency is to put a stop to it now so I can get the change in our system, so the officers know, starting tomorrow, that it's a violation and no longer make a physical custody arrest.
So, no longer make a physical custody arrest.
What was that?
No longer, then. You would end that.
Correct. We wouldn't do that anymore.
So, in other words-
Don't you have the option of not arresting them?
The officer has the option, correct.
So, just to make-
But it doesn't mean that they, they won't do it. They could.
To make this, try to clear it up a little bit, the Ninth Circuit case that came out last year, the Boise case, it said that it was basically unconstitutional for us to charge people with a crime if they were camping in public. We immediately changed that ordinance, but this one was hidden in the, in the park statute, and that's why. So, we're not going to charge anyone with a crime for overnight camping, so we might as well do it. I mean, there, quote, there's no life, life emergency, but at the same time, we're not going to do it, so there's no need to wait thirty days to say we're not going to do it, I don't think, in this case. But it's up to you, so.
So, so it says, right, so there's a fine of a hundred dollars, though?
Up to. It's the judge's discretion.
So, you're going to give them a ticket rather than a felony?
A misdemeanor. So, the, the officer can cite them with a violation, and then the judge can decide whether a fine is warranted or not, and then he can impose that fine up to a hundred dollars.
So, it lessens the enforcement.
Right.
So, so to be clear, the, the ordinance brings, brings all of these into alignment, right? And I think the question is really one of whether you want the, you want it to go into effect the day after the mayor signs it, or you can wait for thirty days. And that has to do with the definition of emergency, or I would rather see it, say urgency, but the emergency clause is the emergency clause.
The, the whole reason this comes up is the state of Oregon has used the emergency clause over and over and over, and we did in the past when there was no emergency, and it's abuse. I mean, it's, the other thing that they did at the state, at the state levels, they use the emergency clause, so you can't take it to vote of the people. And that, you know, that does not happen at this level, or, I don't care. I just, it bothers me that we call something an emergency that is not truly an emergency, because we can just say, hey, don't do it. Do what you want to do. I'm not going to vote against it, but.
So, we need to do a first, first reading. Do you want it to say declaring emergency or not for the first reading?
Will of the body.
What's that?
The will of the body. If they want to do it, okay, fine.
Do you want, which one do you want, on page fifteen, or the handout that says declaring an emergency for, we need to do our first reading?
I actually have a problem with the hundred dollar fine.
But it's lessening the current enforcement.
Takes it down from being arrested to a hundred dollar fine.
And, and again, that's-
It gives them leverage.
And Counselor Johnson, that's not, that's not the police's discretion. That's the judge that gets to decide what the fine will be. So, he can make it a dollar, he can make it nothing, he can make it whatever.
Okay. So, which do-
So, whether it's a misdemeanor or, or whatever.
Correct. And, and under our code, under the general provisions of our code, we can charge fines that are, I mean, far, twenty-five hundred dollars. I mean, now, this limits that to a hundred dollars, but they could have been, I mean, most violations can be charged up to twenty-five hundred, so.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with calling the emergency clause. And the, the reason, one of the reasons for having the wait from the first meeting till the next council meeting for passing an ordinance was, back in the day, that we didn't have nearly the communication that we have now. And, so, I think, I think there was more of a reason to hold things over, and we can still do it if the thing is controversial, and, and we think the public ought to have a better chance of taking a look at something. But in this particular case, I have no problem with calling it an emergency so that we can get the fine lowered and, and get it in sync with the rest of our sleeping around in unfortunate places.
So, Mike, are you okay with the emergency?
I'm okay with the emergency.
The one that's on the dais.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
I second it.
So, have, we don't need to make a motion on that. Sean just needs to read it.
And I'm going to read it. No, I, I'm going to read it, but I want to point out, I'm sitting here looking at it, and there's a, there's a scribbler's error under where it says amending AMC Title VII Public Peace, Morals, and Safety that's underlined. If you look, it says AMC Chapter twenty-eight point two-four-five. It looks like the seven had been left out of that. It's Chapter seven point two-eight two-four-five. So, when I read the ordinance, the, the title says seven point two-eight two-four-five, but when we vote on it, I would, we would have Mary change that to a seven point two-
Good catch.
Okay?
Good catch. Okay.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Section seven point two-eight point two-four-five Overnight Camping and Declaring an Emergency.
Make a motion to adopt it.
No one needs a motion to-
We need to read it second time, title.
Is that your motion?
It is.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Second reading.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Section seven point two-eight point two-four-five Overnight Camping and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Now.
I'm making a motion to adopt, as a second reading.
Okay. All right. For a second?
For a second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Uh-huh. And next, we have adoption of the resolution. This is for extended property tax abatement agreement. And Seth and John, you coming forward?
This should be easy compared to what we've gone through.
Sorry, Mr. Wade.
John Pascal with the Albany Millersburg Economic Development Corporation. This is requesting a resolution to approve an extended enterprise zone abatement for Stack Hip Company that you got a presentation for in a previous work session. So, as, as enterprise own rules allow, companies that pay in excess of a hundred and fifty percent of Lynn County's average annual wage can get an extra two years in property tax exemption for their project. I'm losing my voice, sorry. So, standard enterprise zones, enterprise own exemption is three years for companies that pay the extra hundred and fifty percent of Lynn County's average annual wage. They can, they can ask and get approved for and actually- for an extra two years. So, that's what this request is. We have, we would need an agreement from this council. We need an agreement from Lynn County. It's your co-sponsors of the enterprise zone. And there's an agreement that the company and your city manager would sign to, to approve the agreement. So, they have to, they have to make the job creation and they have to pay the wages in order to get the extra two years.
Okay, all right. Questions?
Yes. There isn't a end date on this. On the ordinance itself, on the resolution, it, it shows a beginning date-
No end date.
But, no end date. And while there, it alludes to in the following pages, the, the groups are not connected together.
Well, the beginning date is the completion of the project and the assessor's office will determine that. So, so on January 1st, when the project is completed, that's the, that's the first year of assessment and it would start five years from there. So, right now, we don't know exactly when the project is gonna be completed nor when their first year of exemption would be. But, they would have to file a claim. Each year, they have to file an exemption claim form for the exemption year. So, when they're completed, January of next, next year, they would-
To 2020, when the project-
They would file their exemption claim form and then that starts the clock for the five years.
The whole thing is a no-brainer, as long as we're in compliance. I don't care.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. The county assessor tracks that.
Well, I've had issues with contracts we have made in the past.
Well, I mean, this is an agreement.
At the end of this, I will have something to say about that, but.
Okay.
Unless there's something else, move to approve.
Well, I don't think we have any, we haven't had any issues with these agreements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Agreements.
All right. Motion's been made in a second. Any more questions?
No questions. I, I just hate to give away our tax money with the financial straits that we seem to be in. But, in this case, this is really something that really does support our rarement of this business here in town, so.
It's also gonna track the business.
All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Seth. Okay, council, next. You only have one item on the consent calendar this evening. What would you like to do with it?
Move to approve.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Consent calendar's approved and we did item G1 and 2 already. So, item 3, the Cox Creek Interceptor Project. All right, Stacy, we're keeping you busy tonight.
So, I'm here tonight because I wanted to bring to council's attention some changes that have been made to the scope of the Cox Creek Interceptor Sewer Project. We made these changes to the scope of the project because staff, once they started design, identified that the project's budget wasn't going to accurately reflect the construction costs of the project. The Cox Creek Sewer Project is defined in our current project, CIP, and budget includes construction of new sewer line from the Albany Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility south along Waverly Lakes and then to a point east of I-5. The project's going to help increase capacity in the interceptor sewer line and then also help to facilitate development in east of I-5. Council will see in the draft CIP that was provided, I believe it was this week, that the scope of the project has been reduced. We are now planning to just construct the portion of the project between the plant and Salem Avenue, which is just north of Waverly Lakes. The other segments of the project are being deferred, constructions being deferred to fiscal year 2022 and 2024, I believe. Unfortunately, the segment that was gonna get the line across I-5, we do not, that's gonna fall outside the five-year planning window of the CIP. We don't believe that we have adequate funds at this point to include it in the five-year window. So, there's some reasons for this. This is a complicated project. There are four locations that require jack and board construction methods. And then, again, similar to the riverfront interceptor, the flow line of this interceptor sewer is deep. At some locations, it's going to be up to 25 feet deep. Because of this, once we had reached a 50% design point, we reached out to two general contractors. We wanted them to provide a constructibility review and then also get their input on the construction estimates. Based on their feedback, we identified that we were going to need to reduce the scope of the project. And I wanted to just provide this update in, in the meeting to make sure that council was aware of the change. It is shown in the draft CIP and will be shown in the budget.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you.
Just to serve more growth over on the other side of the freeway.
It's already constraining it.
It is constrained, so that the project's gonna help add capacity to relieve sewer overflows. But, then there's, there's some vacant land east of I-5 in order to develop it. We do need to get this line across I-5.
Yes.
All right. And is there, in the CIP, I haven't looked at it yet, is there a location showing where this interceptor will be? Is there a map on, in there?
The CIP references the, the segments and I could provide more information during the joint CIP meeting for council.
Okay, yeah. Because Cox Creek does go to the Swan Lakes and, so we want to make sure we're excited that we're not having to, make sure we're gonna, if it's gonna be in the view of anyone of the lake, we want to make sure we deal with that.
Yes.
We'll be relocating the line to the street. Right now, it goes behind the, in the back, people's backyards along the lake. I believe we're still thinking we're gonna relocate it to the street, right? Turn people's plumbing around.
Okay.
There's no lift station in this case. Everything's-
No above ground improvements. We don't-
Okay. Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, Stacy. Okay, that's it for council business, except for business from the council. Did anything this evening? No? Okay, Rich?
I do. I have a couple of things. Probably four, five, six months ago by now, I had questions about how the money to LBCC had been spent. And we, we did a investigation and they had overspent some of their funds. Staff found that, $40,000. And same time, they had purchased some things, well, specifically compressed gas cylinders, called them tools, which they're not. It's a capital item. I mean, every welding supply in the world calls that a capital item, as does the federal government. There was an agreement that they would come back and give us the money back, one way or another. I've asked about it and they haven't done that. I, you know, Jorge was there, Seth was there. Seth was, was there early on, so it was one of the first things he did. I would like to find out from LBCC, hey, you know, six months is long enough. And if they don't want to do that, well, then we need to think about saying, hold up on the rest of it until they decide they want to. I mean, we were, you know, we were given, we gave them specific, they gave us a list and we okayed a specific list, and then they bought equipment that was not on that list. So, anyway, that's the one thing. The second thing, we just had some success with something we did this evening. There is another possibility of a, an electron beam wire printing organization where you could make titanium products, zirconium products, et cetera, eight feet wide, four feet high, 20 feet long. Something much bigger than we've ever been able to do. There is a guy who's interested. And, you know, there's a friend of mine who called me about it today. So, I'm gonna be meeting with them and that's why I wanted to talk with Seth after the meeting.
Okay.
And that's all the news that's been to print.
Is that process gonna make hipping obsolete?
It could, because it's done in a, it's done in a vacuum. So, you're putting wire in and hitting an electron beam or two electron beams and several wires in a pattern that makes the, well, makes, makes a-
Makes the item.
Makes the item, makes something four feet diameter, a tank for, for a, for a satellite, a fuel tank for a satellite, four feet diameter, six feet tall, made out of titanium, four inches thick. And they start at something and build a dome and go up and build a dome on top. And when they're finished, they machin the outside and they're done. Something that would take, you know. It's not good for everything, but it's a good adjunct to what we've got here. Doesn't compete with us.
All right, Alex?
So, Sunny was a softball clinic for Med Valley Softball's umpire Association at West Albany High School. Our numbers are down, which is sad, but the numbers are down. But, the USA Softball Umpire in Charge came and we talked about the possibility of a 68 or 128 team in Albany in the next couple of years. And so, they're gonna provide the proposal to me and I'll bring it to council or bring it to whoever you guys tell me to bring it to. But, it looks promising and they're excited about the opportunity to bring a couple thousand people here in the summertime next year or after that.
That'd be great. Yeah. Do you want to bring that to work session then?
I would like to. Once I get the proposal, I'll bring it to work session.
Okay, all right. Yep. And just let us know. We can make sure it gets on a light work session too and schedule it on the, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, they're willing to come and speak and everything.
Good, good. All right, thank you, Alex. Mike, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. And I didn't have anything this evening, so Peter?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, Steph, have anything?
Just quickly.
Yes.
Council had requested a copy of interests or expertise that the different Landmarks Commission members provide. So, we provided that information to you. It's basically just pulled from their applications that they submitted to the cities. Hopefully, that's what you were after and I can't take any credit for it or pulled that together for you, so.
Okay, thank you. And Marilyn, is there the big city cleanup this year?
Yes.
Okay, because I saw somebody mentioned something on Facebook, well, the city needs to do a big cleanup. So, but I didn't know for sure the date.
Saturday, May 18th.
May 18th, okay.
And we'll have more about that at a later council meeting.
Between.
Okay, get it on my calendar. Thank you. All right, Steph, have anything else? Okay, our next meeting dates is, council, you are off next week because I see that Kara was canceled. And so, then you've got a work session on March 25th and Wednesday on City Council meeting on March 27th. With that, thank you, folks, for attending. We're adjourn-